But I'd like to get going because we do have a lot of information that we need to share. Um, I wanna uh start out by saying to everyone, I mean, I'm, I am sure all of you are stunned. Um, there's Karen. Wait, let me put Karen um, put her as, did you go in as a co-host too? Did somebody make Karen a co-host? Um, uh, so whoever is, see, I'm not, okay. You guys are gonna have to do that because that looks like I've been taken off as host. I think Bisa, your host. Um, anyway, stunned about what happened yesterday in Afghanistan and I mean, it, it's just heartbreaking of losing our troops, losing people. I mean, what's going on over there? It had been said, and we, all of us that I'm sure have been following it. Um, and then only to get worse and then to see what happened. It just, it, we just gotta keep them in our prayers, and I know they are, and we have many prayers, but let's lift them up a little high right now in these days and protect the people over there. And another thing that's really something I saw early this morning, because our focus is so on Afghanistan, that um, that I saw that we have a major hurricane. Well, not me, it's gonna get up to a three, which is big enough, but it's going right to New Orleans. And that, you know, they had Katrina, um, they had Katrina sixteen years ago. So we've gotta pray for those people and everything is safe and it's secure. They learned from sixteen years ago and hopefully it all turns out okay. That's supposed to hit, I think, on Sunday or Monday. So got a lot of things to be concerned about, a lot of things to be thankful for. And I, you know, I'm thankful for all the people that have served that are on this call, all those who are serving to help and keep us free. I mean, it is, that's why we're here is to fight for our freedoms. These people are fighting for our freedoms in different ways. We're fighting for our freedoms to keep us free. So let's continue that fight and thank you all for being here. And I wanna thank you for all the prayers that you sent my way too. I'll give you an update at the end about what's going on in my life and my husband's life. But let's now um, go for it. You know, Tom Nobles, who is an S R C member, and Tom, I'm sorry, I, I can't remember the number. What's your number? What district do you represent?
I'm S D seven.
Seven, okay, that's what I thought, but I thought it might as well have you say that. He had mentioned about a couple of the other bills that are, are really um, out there that have not passed, have not gotten out of committee. So he has put those into the chat. Um, and if you want to follow that, you can. This, this call is, it has been over the, since January, since we began, is all about election integrity. All about the here and now of what we're dealing with at the um, at the Capitol. Getting these bills, this bill passed, getting our, as I have on my, on my shirt, one person, one vote, and, and it's not, they can't cheat. So it's, you know, we wanna make sure we have good, strong election integrity. Melissa had sent me something, and I know that Eric's gonna be on here to give us details. They passed that bill out last night. Um, gosh, guys, you guys have done, we've all done a lot of work. And I just am so thankful for all of our state reps and how they stayed twelve hours working on this. Well, it's been a lot more, but then the last twelve hours, they really went at it hard. So thank you all for being here. Communicate with your elected officials on all the other votes. But let's be respectful on what we're talking about, and it's talking about the election integrity of what happened last night and how we're going forward to get this passed in Texas and to have one of the strongest election integrity bills in the United States. So we wanna be, you know, let's not let those, that chat get out of control. Let's stay focused on what our issue is at hand here. So I'm gonna turn this over to a very good friend of mine, who stayed up very late after they uh, finished last night. And he's gonna ta- tell us what's going on, what happened with the amendments. So Eric Opiel, who is an election attorney, um, does incredible things. He's my go-to kinda guy between him and Donna Davidson, which they do a lot of work together. I asked him if he would be, prepare something for us so that we are aware firsthand. So Eric, I'm turning it over to you.
Well, thank you, Tony Anne. Uh, I, I frankly am, am surprised the Democrats came back. Uh, but nevertheless, uh, after a couple of fits and starts, uh, we have Senate Bill one to second reading in the House. It still has to go to third reading today, uh, and then has to go back over to the Senate. Uh, and then if the Senate doesn't accept uh, the changes, then it will go to a conference committee again. So the, the road is not over with, uh, but it's further than it was, obviously, the first special session. So first, I'm gonna start, you know, you, you ask some, some people to uh, hey, do you want the good news or do you want the bad news? Well, we did have an amendment that was put on the bill uh, last night by, or yesterday afternoon by Representative Boosie, which sounds good, uh, sounds uh, sounds definitely good on paper. But the way it's written is so broadly worded is to, is to essentially gut the bill. Uh, and I, and it's short, so I'll, I'll go over it with it, uh, with it for you. Uh, it's talking about reasonable accommodations for persons with disabilities. Uh, however, the, the challenge in it is it says that no provision of this code may be interpreted to prohibit the right of a qualified individual with a disability requesting a reasonable accommodation or modification to any election standard, practice, or procedure mandated by law that the individual is entitled to request under federal or state law. So that's about as broad as, as you could do it. Uh, and here, here's the challenge with that. There is no check on the process by the Secretary of State or anyone else. Uh, the, uh, you know, you, you've seen counties take liberties with election procedures uh, this last election in Harris County, for instance. Uh, so as, as, I'm just gonna give you a couple of examples of how this, uh, this, this might be applied in a place like Harris County. As long as any voter claiming a disability requests it, a county could choose not to require ID numbers or allow signature stamps on mail ballots for persons checking disability box. Uh, a county could deliver ballots by email or hand delivery by partisan workers to persons claiming to be homebound. Uh, a county could authorize nursing home staff to collect ballots, uh, even marking them for residents who claim a disability. That's any election practice or procedure. That's a huge, broad uh, waiver that's in this, in this statute, in, in this amendment. A county could waive assistance requirements so that, for voters who are unable to write or, 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 or see. So you know, right now, we require you not to be able to be, to, to write or see the ballot in order to be eligible for assistance under disability. A county could implement drive-through voting without the requirements of curbside for persons claiming a disability or for persons who are not eligible for curbside voting. Right now, you have to either have a likelihood of injuring yourself in, entering the polling place or have some sort of mobility impairment that would prevent you from going inside a polling place to be eligible for, for, for curbside voting. Uh, this is any disability. So I, I, even if it, my disability is not reasonably related to not being able to go inside a polling place. Um, if you claim that you would be injured entering a polling place, a county could implement a Dropbox situation for you. Uh, the, the two challenges we have with this amendment is it doesn't define disability at all. It doesn't even tie back to the definition of disability that's existing in the election code uh, in eighty-two double oh-two, where we talk about qualifications to vote by mail that was implemented by, that was interpreted by the Secretary, I'm sorry, by the Texas Supreme Court uh, this past year. Uh, there's no verification of a person's claim of disability. And as you know, I'm a very sympathetic persons with disabilities, uh, because, you know, a lot of disabilities are not visible. And uh, and so it's not evident that a lot of people who have disabilities actually have them. Uh, but there is no check on the, on, on the process with the way the, the amendment is drafted. And, and most importantly, it waives any mandated mandate by the, in the election code that can be requested by a person uh, claiming a disability. So um, I'll start with the bad news, then we'll move on to the good news. We had a lot of great amendments on the House floor uh, last night. I'm gonna talk about the nine-page amendment we started off by Representative Mur, which brought this bill a little bit more in line with the Senate version of Senate Bill three. As you probably know, uh, House Bill three from the first special session was laid out in committee, was voted on in committee and came to the floor. And then the day yesterday was spent getting that more in line with the Senate in the hopes that the Senate would just concur. I don't know that the Senate's gonna just concur with some of the things that are in here, so we'll see where, where it goes. Um, section two point oh-one, it, it allows for pre-filled voter registration cards. Um, it, you, you're, you're not going to be required to fill in, the Senate bill requires you to fill in your name, your address, your date of birth. Uh, this amendment uh, will allow those items to be pre-filled and everything else on the voter registration card uh, has to be filled out by the voter. Um, and I'm, I'm taking this from the analysis that was put out by Representative Mur's office, so uh, that's why it's a different font in there. It's, it's, it's a lot, I'm, I have three more screens of this, so I'm gonna just briefly go through a lot of this. And you can read it, I'm not gonna read all of it to you uh, on the, on the screen. Um, it also requires the application, a lot of times we have electronic applications. We have other information that's provided with the application. It requires the, the entire application to be forwarded to uh, to a county where a voter moves to. Uh, the Kane, Representative Kane also passed an amendment to an amendment which defined the election official broadly. This is a good thing because it's important for our poll watcher provisions that election officials, all types, both volunteers, paid, elected, non-elected, appointed by parties, et cetera, all get covered under the pro- poll watcher protections that are in the bill. And then we have uh, section two point oh-three, uh, which uh, clarifies that if a registrar has evidence showing that the person was not eligible to vote and registered or, and/or voted in an election, they have to prepare an affidavit stating the facts. And there was an amendment by Representative Slaton that passed later in the, the session uh, yesterday that requires that affidavit not just to be completed at some time, but to be completed within seventy-two hours after that evidence is received by the voter registrar. Um, also creates uh, rules for opening and closing polling places. Uh, there were some other amendments that, this set up the framework for later amendments uh, last night that restored the requirement to print zero tapes and uh, the final closing state tapes and have them signed by the election judge and the alternate presiding judge both at the polling place upon closing of the polls. Now, I, I, I know people are, they're in the election administration world, they're gonna say, our machines don't allow you to do that in a timely fashion. So we'll see how that works out in the Senate. Um, section four point oh-one, it uh, uh, helped our, our poll watcher protections we talked about earlier. Um, also make sure that poll watchers can attend Signature Verification Committee. Uh, would increase the penalty. We heard a lot of testimony in the House about why we need to raise poll watcher uh, vi- violations of rights of poll watchers to an A misdemeanor. And so that was also included in the bill, was talked about extensively on the floor. Um, uh, also allowed a person to submit not just a driver's license, but also a uh, election identification certificate or the last four, the social security number uh, as a, a, a method of identification when voting by mail. Uh, would uh, also allow a voter to cure that if they put the wrong number on. They would have the opportunity to cure that, that error and have that, that mistake fixed. Um, also uh, would uh, allow for any sort of missing information to be cured. This is something that's going to be required by a court order if we don't put it in statute. So we, it, it's a due process issue uh, with mail-in ballots right now. If you uh, don't, if you have information that's missing, your ballot application will just be rejected and you're not required to be notified of that rejection till after the elections. That creates a due process concern that I'm not able to vote then, uh, unless I'm provided an opportunity to, to, to fix that problem. It makes it less likely that your vote will, will, will count uh, in, in one form of voting than another. Uh, it also uh, has the uh, some info, some information uh, was changed in the oath uh, that is required for persons assisting voters. Uh, also requires Secretary of State to conduct a study uh, of programs that will help persons with disabilities understand how voting systems work and how they're used, because these are complicated machines that a lot of times don't uh, they're not the most intuitive, especially the functions to assist persons with disabilities are not the most uh, intuitive. Uh, it also uh, makes sure that we have a, a good definition of ballot harvesting. Um, it also makes sure that the prohibitions for harvesting also apply to elections officials and not just uh, paid or unpaid political workers uh, for campaigns or what we call in South Texas politiqueras. And also make sure that conforming changes are made uh, to ensure that the criminal provisions are properly enforced. So we had a number of amendments. That was the big kinda perfecting amendment. Uh, then Representative Slaton, as I mentioned earlier, put that seventy-two hour bookend on uh, the uh, requirement to send the affidavit uh, in the event of an unlawful registration or voting. He also had an amendment that requires randomized audits of two large counties and two small counties per year and had the Secretary of State pay one hundred percent of the cost to those. Uh, one of the challenges with that amendment is we don't know how much that will cost. And it also duplicates the effort that was put in place by Senator Culcoret that was passed in the regular session that creates a risk-limiting audit process uh, in uh, in, in existing law. Now, that's a phase in. Uh, under Culcoret's bill, there's a number of years when it, it starts rolling into effectiveness. Uh, this would be effective with the effective date of bill, which is ninety-one days uh, a- after the end of the session. So it's not exactly the same, uh, but pretty much a lot of it is uh, is, is, is in Culcoret's bill from the regular session. So I, the Senate might strip that out as well. Representative Click uh, had two really good amendments. Uh, one requires all electronic devices used in counting ballots in counties of two hundred and fifty thousand or more to have keystroke loggers installed on the, on the computers. And all input logged on those machines used to count ballots has to be sent within five days to the Secretary of State's office. Of course, that would be an election record and so be able to be requested uh, under the Public Information Act as well by, by persons in election contests. This will go a long way to um, uh, I guess reassuring people that uh, there wasn't any nefarious uh, activity included in the count of the ballots. And so uh, that's, having that information be there to show that persons didn't manually manipulate the totals on those machines, I think, is a, a really good uh, uh, amendment. Also requires the development of a training program by the Secretary of State for poll watchers. And all poll watchers will be required to take that training course. Um, you know, some of our larger county parties uh, and, and candidate campaigns do conduct training for poll watchers. I've conducted that training before uh, for R P T uh, on, I can't tell you how many sessions we gave last November. Uh, four or five sessions of training for poll watchers. This would ensure that we have a standardized course for uh, poll watcher training, so they know their rights and their responsibilities. Uh, and uh, would require the, the, those persons to be trained. Now, keep in mind, you can't just pull a poll watcher off the street with this. On Election Day, you'll need to go through and make sure that all your poll watchers are trained in time before the elections and they can present that certificate when they show up to uh, to poll watch. Representative Schofield, as I mentioned earlier, uh, had an amendment that required those zero tapes and those total tapes to be printed and signed. Uh, also, he had a really good amendment to deal with the uh, S R one uh, or, or, and also the uh, H R three or uh, uh, bills that are in the Senate and the House and in Congress right now that would uh, require same-day voter registration. This would bifurcate our federal and state elections to make sure that uh, any of those changes that don't comport to Texas law would not be applied to elections other than federal elections. But he had to withdraw that on a point of order. Representative Clardy uh, had a, uh, an amendment to allow early voting ballot board and Signature Verification Committee members to take notes, but they cannot include personally identifiable information in them and it must be kept as election records by the county. Uh, can't take them home with you, but you can um, have, have the county keep them as a contemporaneous record of um, information that you observe at early voting ballot board and Signature Verification Committee. Also uh, prohibits the county from denying you access to information that you need to uh, complete your duties. There was a case uh, this last cycle where uh, election, an, an election office was refusing, I believe it was also Harris County, to allow access to certain uh, information that you need from the voter registration records uh, to either verify signatures or, or, or check eligibility. Uh, and requires that the early voting ballot board and Signature Verification members cannot retain or share that information outside of their official duties. Representative Allison had an extensive amendment which uh, uh, increased the penalties for, and, and also made it a crime to provide false or misleading information to an election official or an election document. Uh, increased the penalty for preventing a voter from voting, providing false information with an intent to prevent a voter from voting, cause the ballot not to reflect the will of the voter, vote for another who is dead or unqualified, uh, cause a vote to be counted more than once, or to destroy a ballot without voter's consent. Uh, this will deal with a lot of the vote harvesting crimes uh, that uh, that are committed in many cases out of public view by workers for campaigns. Uh, also uh, makes perjury on a voter registration application or any oath, declaration, or affidavit in the entire election code. So keep in mind, this applies to campaign finance reports as well. If you lie on a campaign finance report, it'll be a state jail felony. Uh, a misdemeanor uh, for voting in two states, a misdemeanor for coercing false statements on voter registration applications. And then Representative Cade had an amendment to the amendment, which may estate jail felony for voter registration offenses in exchange for compensation. And both the offerer and the receipt recipient of the compensation uh, would be guilty of the felony. Representative Jatone had really a perfecting amendment that realigned the bill with a number of the provisions that were in the Senate in gross version of Senate Bill one. Uh, added a monthly Secretary of State review of voter rolls, required elections officials in counties of a hundred thousand or more to install video surveillance systems. Uh, this was different than the Senate version. Uh, it loosened it just a little bit. The Senate bill uh, required information to be provided by persons transporting non-family members of three or more. This one was seven or more persons. Uh, then you cross that, that uh, reporting threshold uh, for persons who are, are, are transporting uh, people for political purposes to the polls. Um, also uh, allowed election officials employed by state or local governments to be fired and assesses civil fines uh, for violating provisions of the election code. And then let candidates sue an election opponent to collect a thousand dollars for, up to a thousand dollars for each violation of election laws uh, in, in the uh, anything that's proven to be done by a campaign in violation of the vote harvesting uh, voter registration uh, laws uh, or, or any vote-by-mail application scheme. Representative Kane had an amendment that was freestanding that uh, cleaned up uh, the felon voting uh, prohibition and uh, made sure that it was aligned with the case law. Uh, making sure that the voter was, had to be informed of particular circumstances that made them ineligible and also required Secretary, I'm sorry, the uh, Court of Criminal Appeals to develop a standard form to be provided to all felony convicts. Uh, it, making sure that they're aware that uh, they lose their right to vote on the felony conviction. That's the Crystal Mason case, if you might be familiar with it. Uh, the claim she's making to Court of Criminal Appeals is that she didn't know she couldn't vote. Someone has their hand up, I'm sorry, I don't have a name next to it. What's, what's the question?
No, uh, we don't take, we don't take verbal. It has to go into the, um, it has to go into the chat.
I see. Oh, I see twenty items in the chat, uh, and I haven't been looking at the chat, but that's the end of uh, the presentation. So let's take questions.
Eric, and that, and so what the deal, what will happen there is that we have um, Karen Marshall is a question person. And so she will be saying, um, she put you on the hot seat.
Well, put me on the hot seat, Karen.
Yeah, go for it.
All right, it's fired up and ready to go. Uh, Leonard Foster asks, was the Boosie amendment passed by the House?
Well, the Boosie amendment was the, was the one I first addressed. Let me take you back to it. Uh, did he miss that?
He just said, uh, if it was passed, if so, how and why?
So it was passed. Um, it was laid out pretty early in the day and, and frankly, I think Representative Mur was kind of blindsided by it and, and was confused. He left it to the will of the House and I think people read it and they said, oh, this sounds good. We're helping persons with disabilities and didn't kind of understand when they were voting uh, what they were voting on, uh, unfortunately. And so um, i- it, it passed by about a seventy to forty margin.
Can it, can it be, I'm, I can't, can it be um, fixed in the Senate?
Yeah, it can. It definitely can. The Senate can refuse to accept the House amendments, call for the appointment of conference committee, and then the bill has to be voted on again in both houses.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Go ahead, uh, Karen.
All right, next question. Kathleen Brinkman asks, why are we allowing voting machines that are too complex for the average person to use?
Yeah, so, so this is an issue that is created by the Help Americans Vote Act. Uh, after the uh, Florida election in two thousand, uh, the use of, of, of voting machines was uh, I guess mandated by Congress and uh, in the Help Americans Vote Act, mainly to allow a procedure for persons who have disabilities to be able to use ballot marking devices. Uh, but uh, election administrators, especially in larger counties, find it hard to count paper ballots by hand. And so uh, you have to have a voting machine in order to count large numbers of ballots in a timely fashion.
All right, Sheila Bernhardt asks, uh, she, she says, I'm wondering about the machines and could we hear again about how we are ensuring that machines are not rigged?
Yeah, so, so those machines, and this was addressed a little bit in the bill, but uh, we have an existing set of certification for uh, process for voting machines uh, where the actual code and software are looked at by the Secretary of State. The machines are examined by both a technical examiner and a legal examiner appointed by the Secretary of State and the Attorney General's office. So there's a certification process for those. And um, and then there's also existing protections prohibiting communication by those machines with the internet and outside uh, uh, devices. This bill also adds a check on the process by Representative Click that uh, presented, prevents manual input of votes uh, in larger counties. It requires keystroke logging devices to go on those machines and all of the inputs sent to the Secretary of State. So there's a lot of protections in both existing law and this bill and legislation we passed last session to uh, to, to ensure the integrity of the, of, of the machines that are used.
All right, and she asks, when and where uh, will there be forensic audits? And if so, please let us know who to contact.
So uh, yeah, there were, there were uh, there was a bill passed by, and signed by Governor Abbott, by Senator Culcoret during the regular session that uh, implemented a really good system of what are called risk-limiting audits uh, in uh, in all counties in this state, uh, beginning with the twenty-twenty-two elections. Uh, and then it gets phased in with new equipment. All equipment has to be capable of being auditable by the twenty-twenty-six uh, election. And the reason why that's being phased is because this equipment costs millions of dollars to procure for these counties. And so especially counties that just bought equipment, don't wanna throw that equipment away um, if it doesn't provide a voter-verified paper trail. And that's the, that's the requirement. A number of counties already provide voter-verified paper trail. already provide voter verified paper trail, but it will be required in all counties by 2026. And then this bill contains the Slaton amendment, which may or may not stay on the bill, which does the similar requirement.
And the last question Kathy B. asks, does this ensure that all machines will be examined?
None of the legislation, all machines are examined when they're placed in service. They are all going to be examined by the election workers at the polling places to make sure they don't contain votes when they're activated. And there will be tapes that will be printed at the end of the close of the polls to ensure that the result doesn't change between the time the poll, it leaves the polls and goes to the tabulation machine.
All right. And then John Sefsek just asked, will Tote's bill HB 241 for forensic audits of large counties move forward?
So that amendment, no, okay. So no, that, that was not technically part of, of this bill. And, and so I, I can't tell you whether the House is going to vote, move it forward, but there's only less than a couple of weeks left in the special session. So I, I would venture to say it won't, but that's up to the House.
And Fred Reichman asked, could you please restate the decision regarding removing the amendment pertaining to separating Texas state elections from federal election ballots?
Sure. Representatives Schofield and Representative Jatone both had similar provisions in the regular session, which did not pass. Representative Schofield offered the amendment last night. There was a point of order raised by, I can't, I can't remember who, who brought it from the back mic. It was a Democrat. And on the basis that it, it was a rule called the two subject rule, that it wasn't within the scope of the original bill as passed. And so that was ruled by the, or actually there was no ruling made by the parliamentarian, but the amendment was withdrawn and the point of order was withdrawn.
All right. And that's all the questions in the chat for now.
Okay.
Eric, you know, I, I just can't tell you how much we appreciate you putting that slide presentation together. Having, I mean, from being done last night, I mean, we truly appreciate it. It's filled with lots of, it was great. And really appreciate you doing that.
Well, it shows how much work your reps put in last, yesterday. I mean, there, there was, I, I want to say 80 something amendments that were offered. It was a marathon and, and, and a huge hand clap to especially Representative Mer who, man, he, he answered questions with aplomb. I mean, he was spot on, 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 on not creating a bad legal record for the bill. He was, he, he, he answered questions. He was, he was courteous at all times, just never, never got, I mean, he was great. Big hand clap for Representative Mer in handling the bill.
Thank you. Yeah. Well, and thank you too. Yes, we want to thank all of them for their work. Cause I, I watched for a little while and I just couldn't take it. I saw, I think that we, so many of you did go to the Capitol and were there for a period of time. And I thank you for doing that action. I know it was short notice, but we, that's the notice we had. And it's greatly appreciated. But Eric, thank you. Don't go away because we might have other questions. But I'd like to go into the, our next presentation, which is about election integrity. Before I go there, I want to say also thank you to all the SREC members, all the people that are in Lubbock. I said it earlier, but I want to say it again. We appreciate you. You're driving there and getting there like putting a lot of time and energy and then getting up and participating in this call is greatly appreciated. Thank you for all your service that you do too. Okay. So then I'm really excited. Oh, wait, before I go there, did Senator Hughes get on? Is, did he ever, did we see him? Is he on here?
I have not seen him yet.
Okay. And I know that, I mean, they weren't, you know, I just want to be respectful. They got on, I wanted to give them time. What about our representatives? I mean, they're probably so drained at this point. I don't, I don't think that I saw any of them get on either. So let's move on to something that we are going to be able to do for, to help our elections in 2022. Or even our, our city and county elections, our city or school board elections. And that is the RNC made a decision to hire state directors for election integrity, not state directors like Quentin. He's our state director overall. But the election integrity state director. And that we have one incredible woman that has put in so much time and energy. And I'm excited that she is here to share with us what the projection, what the plan might be and give us a little picture of that. And your job for the action item, and I'm going to say it again afterwards, I, so I want you to play, pay close attention. Is that how can you help Melissa? How do you help make this go out throughout the whole state of Texas? Because it's going to take all of us to help Melissa incorporate this plan. So Melissa, who is someone I have just so enjoyed to get to know recently, has been an activist for a very long time in this state. And now she's getting a very active role, very respected by the RNC. So we're glad to have you part of our team, Melissa. And please share with us, you've got lots of time. So I think you've got 40 minutes. Or let's say maybe you have, you have 30 minutes and, and between your presentation, your slides and questions. Would that work for you?
That'll work. Well, I'm so excited to be with you this morning and I really appreciate Toni Ann that you've given me the opportunity to come and just get to say hello to everyone. I know that I've had the chance to engage with many of you. And if we haven't had the chance to get together, you'll probably be hearing from me pretty soon. As we get kicked off, I kind of want to look back slightly. And that gives some context as to why now and what the election integrity program is all about. Now Toni Ann was recently at the summer meeting with the RNC. And at the summer meeting, they released a 23 page report. Now, the report was actually commissioned by Chairwoman, the RNC Chairwoman, Ronna McDaniel. And it was a 23 page report over seven months of investigation. Actually, the RNC spent about 40 million during election integrity in the 2020 cycle. So they really wanted to analyze what the fruit of all of that was, what issues or concerns may come out of the 2020 election. And really study and make recommendations to restore election transparency and also election integrity in all future elections. So the outcome of that report found, you know, COVID-19 had drastic and kind of insane impacts on the way that laws were circumvented, the way that it affected the administration of the election overall. But major takeaways is that in analyzing the details of everything that had transpired, it was determined that it's very crucially important to establish a year round, on the ground election operation effort. That way we can be, you know, geared up in the recruitment efforts of great election workers that are well trained and thoughtfully placed and fully equipped and empowered to protect our elections as part of the effort. That's, that's why I was hired. And so I'm really excited to, to be here. I'm a Texan. So just want to say, RNC, yay, we hired a Texan and placed a Texan here in Texas. So I'm glad to, to be with y'all. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Get this kicked off. Okay. And there we go. Think we got it. And we don't have it. I had this issue the other day. There we go. Alrighty. Let me take a look at what we got here. Can y'all see my screen? Okay? No?
Yes.
Okay. So you can see the slideshow?
No.
No.
I, I can't see it.
I see me because I'm talking. We're, we're looking at the Zoom window.
Did you?
All right. You know what? Let's, let's just go ahead and talk about it. And so the election integrity initiative launching here in Texas. The, the real main thing that we want to do is, you know, it's been said multiple times before. Toni Ann actually is wearing a shirt that talks about the importance of the real heart of it. And that that's one person, one, one legal vote. We want to make it very easy to vote, but hard to cheat. So what does that look like? We really need to have eyes and ears and boots on the ground at every single phase of the election process. So that's why our election workers and our election volunteers are so incredibly important. You know, they are really part of the system to detect and to mitigate issues or problems, any violations or irregularities of fraud, any problems. And the goal is really to ensure that the process is fair, that it's open, it's honest. And, and that everyone who is legally entitled to vote, that they are able to cast their ballot and that it's counted properly. So the actual election workers are incredibly important. And what we found in some states particularly, or some counties, particularly some of our larger counties, it's incredibly difficult to get workers placed and through the county training as well as getting folks equipped with election law information in a tight and concise way so that election workers feel really competent and grounded in their knowledge. So that they can quickly and easily identify and assess a situation if there is a problem. So.
Melissa, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but can you stop sharing your screen? Please. There you go. Okay. Now you can, so finish, go ahead and finish. I apologize, but it was kind of weird.
Okay. Is that better? All right. So, um, with that being said, the recruiting election workers in each county to come alongside these counties that have had issues or problems with getting enough boots on the ground. So the intent of what RNC wants to do is develop an aid program, AID. A is to work alongside counties to assess the number of polling locations they've had in the past, which, and then determine the amount of rollover election workers that they may have. And where there's a deficit, help with the recruitment efforts and make sure that we do get enough election workers placed. You know, there are deadlines by which lists need to be, be submitted for election workers. So educating counties on what those deadlines look like. And so that we're able to get placement in a timely fashion and also fill any gaps that we may have. We also want to come alongside counties and determine hits and misses or weaknesses and strengths to what happened with election day operations, the previous cycles, looking at trends, pulling trends to determine if there needs to be additional coverage in certain areas. And then developing an infrastructure to compensate for that. Really, the I part of aid is to identify our goals within each and every county and come alongside to help build to capacity the number of not only election workers. These are your presiding judges and your clerks, but also your poll watchers. So those are two very different extremes within, in the protection of elections kind of, kind of role. Poll watchers, while legislation is coming up that, you know, training will be required. We also want to make sure that there is enough concise and tight checklist of information so that folks, you know, my experience has been that poll watchers often get out there and placed and they get a little bit nervous about making sure that they're doing all they need to do. So we want to have resources and, and checklists so that they're able to best identify issues and then also have the tools necessary to report those issues and escalate those issues. So as part of the deterrence for any potential, potential irregularities or problems within the election cycle, training will be massive. Training at every single phase. And then also having forms and documentations where election workers and, and poll watchers are able to gather the accurate and proper information so that they can escalate a problem. While I know in Texas, folks are frustrated by what they've heard and maybe even seen coming out of the last election cycle. What I can tell you, having worked in Harris County and during the last election cycle, it's super, super critical that if issues are identified, they're, they're identified real time and that we begin immediately collecting all the proper information necessary to have a legal footing in addressing the election and if need be, doing any overturning of the election. So again, the whole point behind the aid program of assessing and identifying and and turning through having boots on the ground and, and trained individuals is to be able to escalate everything in a real time and legal benchmark way. So that if need be, the election can be safeguarded. What I'm personally going to do with the RNC is to engage with approximately 30 top counties to really do a drill down on the aid program and come alongside them. All of the counties, however, will have an opportunity to engage in training. We're looking at doing trainings in recruitment events across the whole entire state. One thing that I've heard keenly from a lot of our smaller counties and our rural counties, having been involved in election integrity efforts for, for quite a while, is that they feel forgotten. And I want you to know, I know you're there and, and I feel your concerns and your pain and RNC is taking it very seriously at all levels to make sure that the trainings that are developed are available to each and every single county. Likewise, we'd like to help come alongside and develop some really good best practices for counties that want to establish ballot security committees or election integrity operation committees. And then also amplify or implement a war room, if you will, for election day operations. So that as calls are coming in or there's concerns coming in, we can properly escalate to a hotline and also to our partner legal team. That's what's pretty phenomenal. It's not just a recruiting and training effort in order to shore up the base of the election. It's also having legal components and a legal team that will be coming alongside. The RNC will be hiring out a, a fully dedicated legal counsel, which will not only make sure that our trainings are all compliant with new election code and election law, will also be able to properly address and navigate the system through the duration of the process if any issues are identified. So for those counties that have been lacking in that legal attention, we'll also be building a framework and an infrastructure where we can provide support to you as well. And I know in the past, the Republican Party of Texas has had a hotline and they've been available to you during early voting and also election day. That's going to continue, but we want to make that a more robust system. And also help counties that so desire to hopefully implement their own hotline. So it's a redundant two tier system where we can catch each and every single question, problem and concern that comes in from our election workers or our poll watchers and be fully supportive of those efforts. I think through the knowledge of, of proper election law, just like Eric was able to provide with where we currently are in that process by kicking it off with great informative trainings about what the new law requires and expects, not only of ourselves, but of voters. I think it will be a great launching point as we come alongside counties to evaluate and implement an amplified system to ensure that to evaluate and implement an amplified system to ensure that all of election integrity operations works well. What's incredibly nice is that since election integrity works alongside Victory Texas and the field team, you guys know the wonderful team we have out there. We've got Chris and Quentin and, and Jefferson. And they're doing recruitment of folks to, to voter registration and to get out the vote and to, to make sure that portion of, um, voter contact is incredibly strong. Many of those same folks that are elected to work in that part of, uh, the election process can then be cross-trained and also placed either as an election worker or a poll watcher. Again, I'm just excited about the program that will be kicking off. I, um, encourage, uh, each of you to, I'll go ahead and put my phone number in the chat box. Please don't hesitate to contact me with any questions you may have. Um, there will be a survey going around to county chairs and also to S R E C members. And that's really an autopsy of what y'all saw last election cycle. It's to give us a good springboard of assessment as we're, um, amplifying the trainings for you. And I look forward to meet, meeting each and every one of you. And, um, I'm really excited that in 2022, we're going to make it easy to, easy to vote, hard to cheat. And that's what it means to win at the ballot box.
Melissa, you are just incredible. Yeah. There you go. Thank you, Karen. I, there, I got the same thing on, right? So that's what we're working on. Yep. Um, and there I can see Karen with the, Melissa, this is, I told you that, I mean, she's got this planned out. I, she's putting in her phone number, her contact information in the chat. Please take that. I'm challenging you to make contact with her, to be there and to work with her, alongside her, to help make this the strongest and the best election we've ever had and the fairest. And with there's fraud, we're going to be on top of it. So we are, and so Melissa, we're so glad to have you part of the team. Thank you for all that you're doing and all that energy that you're putting into. Um, I, I have, before we go on, Quinn, I just, if you weren't mind, can you just give a brief update of what happened this past week down in Laredo? I had it in the TED Talks, but I think it's always nice to hear it too.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, well, good morning, everybody. Uh, as Toni Ann said, this past Saturday was our very first Hispanic Outreach Community Center grand opening. Um, had it in Laredo, Texas. Something that I'm very proud of is that this was not just the first grand opening in Texas. This was the first Hispanic office in the entire country for the R N C. We're going to be operating in upwards of about 20 states. And this is the very first one, um, that we had in the country in Laredo. So we had the R N C co-chair, Tommy Hicks, show up. He was very pleased, made a great speech. We had a couple other, um, people in the Laredo community, uh, get up and talk and, uh, had about 70 people in a brand new office that we have. So it's very exciting. We're going to be opening up other offices in places like Houston, Dallas, San Antonio, McAllen, and potentially others. Um, so it was very exciting and we are looking forward to opening up more.
Wonderful. Thank you for all that work. And I saw the pictures and the article, they got great press. It is impressive. So if you want to read more about it, you can go to TED Talks and, uh, that was the lead article there. Um, I, I see one of our, uh, past state chairs on the call. Steve, how are you doing down there? Did you have anything you'd like to say before we, um, start wrapping this up? Uh, you.
I was hitting the wrong button. Um, just that I hope everybody understands, uh, and I presume everybody does because of all the hard work that's gone through. The, not only the enormity of the process of getting this election reform done through the legislature, but just how fortunate we are. As I was sitting here, I actually was watching the television a little bit because it was just on national news, uh, what Texas did last night. And of course, the media, uh, presents it as, uh, a terrible bill and, and restrictions, et cetera. But I kind of go by the, the theory that if, if the national media says what we did was bad, that means we did something really, really, really good. And we all a debt of, of gratitude to, to the legislature, legislators, uh, Lieutenant Governor Patrick for shepherding it through. And then I would just like to point out that, you know, my boss, the governor, is the person that said from the start, when the Democrats tried to put up, uh, roadblocks, that he, he would call special session after special session after special session immediately, all the way through next November. And I think that threat, uh, and following through with that, uh, and also telling the speaker that he would make DPS available to be deputized, uh, if they want to use DPS to get the Democrats, uh, is, you know, in large part why we're having this. And of course, he's going to sign the election bill. And then my final point is this. And sometimes I'm not the most diplomatic, so this may come out a little harsh. But a lot of people were criticizing our Republican elected officials in the legislative session without taking into account that the legislative session is not over until the election, the legislative season of special sessions is over. And that you have to judge how effective our party is and how effective our governors and tenant governor and legislators, not by what happens in the beginning of the process, but what happens at the end of the process. And by, I think, any objective measure, and we're not even through the process because we're going to have more special sessions, at least on redistricting. But by any objective measure, uh, we've had a tremendous amount of conservative legislation passed this session. You know, constitutional carry, now election re, election reform. Uh, we've had, uh, religious freedom going on, uh, the ballot. We had the proportion of spending, uh, kept under inflation and population growth. We had a budget surplus. The committee in, 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 uh, in the House moved forward border legislation that if it all gets through, we're going to have about $3 billion. Let me repeat that, $3 billion for border security. And the governor's committed to building 700 miles of, of, uh, border barrier. And let me make a point on that. There are a lot of folks that go to the border with a video camera and show a picture of a fence and say, well, this is Governor Abbott's border wall. Uh, it's not very robust. That's not the border wall. We haven't even started the border wall. You have to go through procurement. It's going to take months and months. That's just a temporary barrier we're putting up. So, so when you put all that together, and then one final thing, the heartbeat and trigger bill, uh, we've just, in my mind, made significant, significant progress. And that was a result of the work of grassroots. So it's the, it's the result of folks on, on this call. But don't forget, it's also the work of your legislators and your elected officials. So when you have an effective cooperative partnership, there's no limit to what we can get done.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate you, Kai, getting on and sharing that. Um, okay. So what, um, I'd like to do is, uh, we got one minute left. Um, again, I'm challenging you to reach out to Melissa. I want to thank Eric Gollyer. Thank you so much for all that time and energy you put in. And people are asking, um, if you would share your slides. I think you're going to send those to me if I'm not mistaken and I can get those out. Thank you. I know you are good. Um, and so what I would also like, I, I need to, I told you, I, uh, at the beginning, I'd give you an update on my husband. Yesterday, we ended up going, meeting with hospice for long-term hospice. So we are dealing with process of his life and my life. And at that point, you know, we made a decision, or I did, and with his help, that I would step back for a short time. We're not going anywhere. You're not going to get rid of me and I got my eyes on all of you. I want you to know. But I think I need to step back for, um, a couple of months. We're going to continue the call, the team. You know, I've been working with a team and that's Bisa Martin and Shirley, uh, Martinez and Pat Hastings. And we had a meeting at the beginning of the week and to say, yes, we're going to continue these calls as long as we're in session, as long as we are, um, as long as we are dealing with, um, elections, then we are going to have the calls. And then we go into redistricting. So they have agreed to go forward and, and to, um, educate and share knowledge so that you can do that also. But I do need to step back. I just can't organize right now. I got to focus on my husband. I know you guys are all understanding. I heard last time you guys had prayed for Tom and I, that Donna Davidson led prayer. And I just want you to know, every single one of those prayers are truly felt and they are very helpful. They get us through those hard times, those hard decisions, and you guys have made that possible. But again, I'm just stepping back for a short time. I just need to get regrouped. You know, I was a nursing home administrator for a many years, way back, um, before I changed profession. And I always gave the lecture to all the caregivers, take care of yourself so you can take care of the one that you're caring for. And that's something I have to do right at this moment. So again, thank you for your prayers. Thank you for everything that you do. But I want you to still come on these calls, support the team. Let's continue working together and I'll be back. And again, I'm saying, I got my eyes on you. I know what's happening across the state. So God bless you all and thank you. And let's keep for the prayers of all those people in Afghanistan, our troops, our families. And let's also pray for those in New Orleans because they need some guidance there too and help and strength. So thank you, everyone. Appreciate all of you and let's go together and get this done together. Toni Ann? Yes, Shirley?
Before you step back a little bit, let me just say that, uh, I think that all of us on this call want to thank you at this moment in time for all of the, the leadership that you have given. We know you serve as our R N C committee woman. But it's, you've never been about the position. You've always been about the passion. And as you've led us and you've, you brought an idea, uh, and you gave it, you gave it structure, you gave it form and you gave it structure. You put structure into it. I believe that we will continue until allow you to settle that, your things on your end. We will be here, moving and ready just as you organized this and as you dreamed it and it, it came to fruition. To me, a leader, uh, takes you where you want to go, but it often takes you where you don't want to go. And by that, I mean the 7:00 AM calls, but we knew we had to do it. So you were about learning. You allowed us to learn more. You allowed us to do more. And more importantly, you allowed us to be more for, to Texas while it shapes its future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shirley. Thank you, all of you. I appreciate all of you very much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, let's go get them. Let's get it done. And again, I'll be watching. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.